I thought.
Thank you, everyone for joining us. All right, so we do have a forum tonight with the exception of Tony who is out on a family emergency, so I'd entertain a motion to excuse her. Right, moved by Eric and seconded by Jamie. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed? All right, perfect. So go ahead and ask for any other, any other business items tonight?
I would like to add to other business. Business presentability is the word I wrote down.
Okay. Did we have anything else to be added tonight? All right, so we'll go ahead and move on. I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Moved by Kathy and seconded by Rebecca. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Opposed? All right, perfect. So we will go ahead and move right in to the public hearing. This is the first public hearing of the night. This is regarding the head start lease, and we will go ahead and start the public hearing at six oh one.
Anybody that'd like to speak can raise their hand and come up to the podium.
Do I need to pay anything?
It's, it's completely up to you if you have anything to say.
We got you.
What is it, what's it about?
Um, this is for the head start. Basically, we redid their lease for this upcoming year. It's changed a little bit from previous years, so they are going to be paying rent to use the facility now. We do have a seat up front, Ron, or there's one couple over there if you want to sit in front of Joe. Wednesday's the other one. Thirty-four seconds.
Six oh four, Carly, you're good.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on the head start lease at six oh four. All right, so we will move into the next public hearing for the evening, which is the Grove short flat alteration. We will open the public hearing at six oh five. We have, yeah, but this is the public hearing party. Uh, we'll, we'll do that a little bit further down on that one.
Do we actually take action on that? Didn't think that we did have any, we don't take any action on it.
On the, on the head start, it needs to be.
No, I'm not.
On the short flat.
We do take action on it.
Down here.
It needs to be approved, yeah.
I don't see it then.
It needs to be added then.
Other business stuff?
Yeah.
Is that where I would make comment? Inch three, you should say.
That's Todd Stump. He's already working on fixing that.
We already tested.
Okay.
Yes. Can I have you come up to the podium and state your name for us?
Sure.
You.
Hi, I'm Mike Thomas. Eric and Lorraine are trying to get their kids to move closer to home. They both worked their whole life so they could have their grandkids living next door to them. I understand there's a couple of people that's, you know, kind of protested. Maybe those people need to think about maybe cleaning their property up, and if they're worried about losing their free field for their kids, maybe they should go over to their park. They've worked. I don't understand what the, what the problem is, and people don't fit about people that pay taxes on their property. But I'm doing what they want to do. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
It's the Grove short flat is some hot alteration.
Yeah.
So it seems to be, we have that as a consistent, since nobody's talking, we have that as a consistent problem in Toledo, where people seem to care more about what other people are doing with their property. We have the same thing going on. Actually, every time we try to build, people don't want to see it. Which, if those people would spend as much time caring about the city earning money elsewhere, then we could figure that out, but it's, it's really quite annoying. This is not the first time. I mean, it's every single, every single bill, the second, we did two houses on Second Street. We had people complaining because they were getting their view of the fire extinguisher blocked. We had people complain when the house went on pine because they were playing in that field. And it's like, it's.
Yeah.
It's ridiculous. It's called the Fourth Amendment.
Six oh.
You have your own rights. Okay, thank you.
Perfect, thanks. Did you have a further comment?
My name's April Luntre, and I have the second what Mike says. I have known the groves since they were little. You and I talked about it today. I think that it is, it. He is right. When somebody wants to say, I don't want them to move in down there because they're going to block my view. Well, they might want to turn around and look at your own home for it. Because it's nothing but a pygmy. It's horrible. And if people have, I've told these guys, I told her, if people have a problem with children, then this is an account for them to be living in. And I, and, and God willing and the crits don't rise, I live right behind them. They live right behind me. They lived on the other side of them, but it's not fair, you know, I mean, it's not like they don't mow their lawn. It's not like they don't, you know, do, because they do do. And I, and I would tell you different, and they know, I would say something different if it was, if it wasn't true. But it is true, and it is true what Mike said. It's, it's wrong.
Yeah.
It is wrong. So, yes, I wanted to second that with Mike.
Thank you, April. Six oh nine. All right, there's no further comments. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at six oh nine.
Thanks for the public hearing. I'm going to volunteer for the City of Park.
Thank you. All right, so we will go ahead and move into department reports. I know we don't have, do we have anything from PD to note?
First of the month.
Did not have anything different. And City Hall?
Um, audit stuff. I completed, as far as I know, all of the uncorrected items from twenty-two and twenty-three today. And I also submitted our response to the audit finding on Saturday. And we have our audit exit meeting on the twentieth. Um, it changed. It was going to be the sixteenth, but I needed a little bit more time. Um, twenty twenty-two was, I can't really speak to it. I wasn't here. Twenty-three, um, took me, it was, twenty twenty-two took me a couple of days to figure out twenty-three. I did today. Um, there was a hundred and ten thousand in, unaccounted for revenue, which is good, and um, not being there, so fifty-seven thousand was not accounted for in streets, and then I think it was forty-something in the four hundreds. And though I had to update the ending for twenty-two, they said, for some reason, twenty-three, everything just seemed to kind of fall into place, and it fixed itself somehow. So, I don't know, twenty-three looks, looks good. Hopefully twenty-four will be, be better, so. We do have the one finding, um, same one that we had the last audit, so. I'll have more to report when we have our interview, but we're done. As far as I know, we're done. We didn't spend a crap ton of money like we did last time, so it was kind of nice.
What was the finding?
Um, and it, it's about our financial records, um, not being able to provide enough evidence for our financial records, and that's just because I wasn't here for twenty-two, so I couldn't, all I could do was provide records. I couldn't answer um, to a lot of stuff. And then there was checks that were cashed in December of twenty-one, but they weren't reconciled until like mid-twenty-two, so I'm not really sure how they got cashed, but not in the system, so I just couldn't answer questions. So it was basically the same issue as before, just we don't have answers to.
It's the magic books.
Yeah.
And now going forward will be.
Yeah, twenty-three looked, twenty-three looked good, and like they said, everything just kind of seemed to, our beginning and ending balances were, for twenty-two were off. Um, but our beginning balances for twenty-three, even though they still kind of correlate, um, they just kind of all fell into place. And then a main issue with twenty-two is, is our transfers weren't pulling into the general ledger, so. Yeah, not too bad.
Thank you for all your hard work on that, even though it's been many, many hours.
Yeah.
Do we have any questions for City Hall? All right, so we will go ahead and move on to Public Works.
Hello, everyone. My name's Jake Crowe. I am a Public Works Assistant. Uh, this past couple of weeks, as far as our daily operations and routine stuff goes, they were performed without any issues. Um, one of the major things we did the past couple of weeks was finished up, uh, the Parkwood Shed project we were working on, just kind of pretty much spending the best five hundred dollars we can on getting it to last longer and be a little more stable. There were some running out studs and stuff like that. Um, we finished up running the screw press out of digester two. Uh, it's been a little bit of a hassle just playing with it. Um, cold weather and polymer and pipes and stuff, but overall, it went well. Um, John and I both went to a wastewater PNCWA meeting hosted in Chehalis. That's pretty much just the wastewater treatment plant chapter of our area. We got Chehalis, Vader, and uh, pretty much all the local towns around here who have wastewater treatment plants. We um, get together a couple of times a year, and there's uh, vendors who come out and stuff and give us, it's pretty much continuing education credits for those operators who need to take them to maintain their operator's license. Um, it's also a good way to connect with other people, get information on how to better our treatment plant, how they can better theirs, just, uh, consulting with those around us. Um, our F-250 has been in the shop, just getting a full tune-up as well as new tires. Uh, much needed. That's been at the Dodge dealership in Longview. Um, we took one fecal coliform sample into DOH for water system, just our regular stuff. And we're planning on taking one this week to finish up the year. They kind of closed a little early in December for the holidays. Um, we had to do a relocate for the K and R project over there on Maple and South Bit. Couple streets locating our utilities and whatnot. Um, we finished shopping for some of our small tools and equipment stuff. Most notably, a push lawnmower and an air compressor, just kind of wrapping up our budget for the end of the year, spending what we have and where we need it. Uh, doing some shop cleanup and stuff, still preparing for that inventory, so, you know, just chipping away at it. Um, and finally, one of the big things we did was finish reviewing and testing asset management programs and collecting quotes. Been playing with a couple of them, seeing what works, what will work best for us, and kind of compiling that information to present to you guys, and I think we're going to be talking about that a little more later. So I'll just leave it at that. Any questions, anyone?
Was this a small lawnmower versus the one only bought two years ago?
Oh, yeah, it was just a push lawnmower. It helps us with the boat launch. Our one broke, we got a bunch of old push lawnmowers, and the one we're currently using, uh, it's just a cheap one, and it doesn't have the thing, mowing that side hill is a little difficult, so. Thank you.
So we'll go ahead and move into council reports. Um, not a whole lot for me to report. We did get the park decorated, did the Santa Quad parade. It was a great turnout. I loved seeing as many people there. Um, actually felt like there was a lot of community, which we haven't really seen a whole lot of lately, so that definitely made me, made me happy, made my heart happy. Um, and I had quite a few people that came up to me afterwards with great ideas on how to improve it next year, so I, we're open for that. Anybody has any ideas on how to make it better? Please come by, let us know. We're happy to take all that information and try and make it bigger and better each year. Um, other than that, not much. I know we do have, um, coming up in January, we'll have the first mayor's meeting of the year, so we'll be, I'll be bringing back some information from that as well. You have Tony, anything to report, Eric?
No, hold on.
Um, I have a, a folder compiling, uh, information for the loans and stuff for for projects that we're going to need for water main replacements and stuff. Just a couple of other things I want to add to it, including the one thing you sent me today. And other than that, it'll be ready for, oh, a workshop.
Perfect.
And I watched my first quad parade. That was very cute. I didn't know they were all decorated instead. Watched it from my porch.
Yeah, it seemed to so, everybody was pretty happy with, with the route change, and a lot more people got to see it, so.
Yeah, it was nice that you went up and down.
Yeah.
Sorry, I missed the quad parade.
Exactly. Anything to report, Kathy?
The quad parade, that was pretty.
Yes.
But nice, nicely decorated ones.
Yes.
That was, that was fun to see.
Yeah, I would drive slower.
It did go pretty fast.
They kind of zipped right by my house, and I went, wait a minute, I was just looking at you.
Yeah. I'm going to stay at like the five mile an hour. But yeah, I'd. All right, perfect. So we can go ahead and move into the committee reports. Does Planning Commission have anything today? I know you guys have a meeting coming up in two days.
There's a meeting on Wednesday, the eighteenth. Uh, there will be a, uh, public hearing at that time with regards to the building on five oh five over here, the brown building that used to be an antha barber camp. Uh, Ryan Dennis will be chairing that meeting. I'll be on my way to Kansas.
All right. And then, um, anybody want to speak on behalf of the park board?
Uh, we don't really have anything. Well, we do have something very important, which is on the agenda. We have a new parks board member, Elizabeth Fuel, who will be sworn in tonight.
Okay, so we will go ahead and move on. Uh, no special presentations tonight. Is there any public comment on agenda items? All right, so we'll go ahead and move in to new business. So starting this off is Resolution three oh six A, which is the head start lease. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with reliable enterprises for the use of the Scout Lodge property. Entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we accept Resolution three oh six A.
I'll second it. It's been moved by Rebecca and seconded by Jamie. We'll go ahead and open it up for discussion.
Yes, it's not in here. Okay. Um, so where did we get the, by the way, not to be confused with lacking of support for head start. Very much like the words that were spoken.
Yes.
And, um, I think we should continue to support it, so I'm glad we're doing that. Uh, but from a beneficiary standpoint, where did we come up with the rental, monthly rental price?
That was just a quick research on chat for the area. Um, I will have an agent come out next year, an actual real estate agent. She'll take into account the kitchen. Um, I kind of reached out. I said, you know, if anyone wanted to do any digging, um, I haven't had a lot of time, so.
I just pulled a comparable since the building, since the, something that would be similar to Class C space with that two hundred seventy thousand dollar building. And if you do the triple net, what is called.
Yeah, and we left.
Out closer to two grand, if not thirteen hundred, so I'm curious.
Yeah, and we left the actual amount open. I figured there'd be some discussion on that. I just didn't have time to do any real digging on the.
Yeah, based on the square footage with sixteen eighty um, class C space should go for about fifteen fifty, which would be twenty one hundred a month, but we are in Toledo, smaller market, so it gets cheaper.
And we do have to stay under.
All the way down to seven fifty.
Yeah, we do have to stay under for market value in order to not have to go through the bidding process and all that.
So we'd have to do more.
Seven fifty is really well under, okay? Just.
And I think that also gives them, kind of, this will be their first year of actually paying for the facility, so I think that kind of gives them an idea, and, you know. And I'm sure that Dallas has read over the contract thoroughly, too, to know that you know, we, we can reevaluate this on, on a regular basis, so.
On a yearly.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's low. It was just a quick search.
I'll rent the space.
Right.
Can we ask questions on that?
We have to wait until then. It's voted on, I think, right?
I believe so. Where's that the? Does anybody else have any comments? What was, can I head on, come up to the podium again? Sorry. Hey, can you get your nubs in today? Sorry.
You're the chair right here.
Yeah.
Sat in those chairs. Uh, on a Scout Lodge, realize they haven't paid before. They're going to pay now. I can't quite remember when I was sitting here, but, uh, who's going to pull maintenance on the building?
They are. They are. But that is part of their contract, um, to continue the maintenance on the building.
Full maintenance, everything is.
And their utilities as well. Absolutely. All right.
As long as they're asking questions, how many children lose that normally?
Are you twenty or twenty-two?
Twenty-seven.
Oh, is it twenty-seven? All right, if we have no further questions, we'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. So we will go ahead and move on to the next item. So the park board has a nomination for the vacant park seat. That is Elizabeth Fuel. We do have her here tonight, so. I know before I ask for a motion, is there any questions you guys have that you'd like to ask her? All right, then I would entertain a motion for their nomination.
I'll make a motion that we nominate Elizabeth Fuel for the partner group.
Right, then moved by Rebecca and seconded by Jamie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, perfect. So then we will go ahead. I will have her come up, and we will do her oath of office.
This is yours. It's on Oxford, so we'll be able to follow along.
I'll have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Elizabeth Fuel.
I, Elizabeth Fuel.
You solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of a member of the City of Toledo Park Board.
You solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of a member of the City of Toledo Park Board.
For the best of my ability and accordance with the Constitution and laws of the United States.
For the best of my ability and accordance with the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The laws of the State of Washington and the ordinances and regulations of the City of Toledo.
The laws of the State of Washington and the ordinances and regulations of the City of Toledo.
I will uphold and adhere to the principles of integrity.
I will uphold and adhere to the principles of integrity.
Transparency and fairness in all park board activities and decisions.
Transparency and fairness in all park board activities and decisions.
I will strive to promote public welfare and act in the best interest of the City of Toledo.
I will strive to promote the public welfare and act in the best interest of the City of Toledo.
Congratulations and welcome.
Right there. Or I can get your signed copy, too.
Perfect, thank you so much.
We can all sign it.
I know, exactly. All right.
Thank you.
All right, so we will go ahead and move on to the Winlock Court Services ILA.
Make a motion that we accept the renewal of the Winlock Court Services ILA.
It's been moved by Eric and seconded by Jamie. We'll go ahead and open it up for discussion.
So my question was, is this a manual thing, and you apparently just answered that?
We're trying to get.
We're going to get it on a two-year, but yeah, we just needed to get all of our contracts to expire, which is, I think, the end of twenty-five, and then everything will go in a two, two or three-year contract.
What a plan.
I just want to make my December really busy.
Is it off? It'll be off from your audit stuff, that, right?
Will we, will we be?
Yeah, yeah, okay, good. No, it'll be on without it, because next year's no audit.
So there was some yellow highlighting, and I'd like to know why.
Um, that was just my stuff, and I didn't have a, the copy of, a clean copy. That was my notes, uh, when I was trying to figure out how to do the accounting down by tickets. So you can ignore those. Those are my notes from last year, and I probably don't even know what they mean anymore at this point.
Okay.
Well, you've been very helpful.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Right, motion carries. So we will now move on to ordinance eight one four. And this is the budget amendment. We are going to do just one reading of this. And so ordinance number eight one four, an ordinance for the City of Toledo, Washington, amending ordinance number seven nine six to update budget appropriations and superseding the previously adopted numbers in ordinance number seven nine six.
Make a motion that we accept ordinance eight fourteen.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Eric and seconded by Kathy. We'll go ahead and open it up for discussion.
Are you talking to you? Give us an order?
Yes. Um, maybe. Budget amendment, so, um, kind of hard to know what's going to happen at the end of the year. Um, so our expenses are a little high, just so it gives us a little bit of wiggle room. Um, the way our budget was done last year is we didn't include grant money or a lot of the, like, pass-through, anything that was considered a non-expense wasn't added in there. And so our numbers from our original budget look very, very different. And that reserve ARPA money is um, leftover money that we had, so we had to show it in as a reserve. Um, our revenue is way higher than what we thought, which is a good thing. I know we were really, we tried to be relieved. Consider, there's the word, I'm really conservative on it, just so that way we could keep our expenses down. And our expenses in the four oh one, I'm guessing that it's going to be at four sixty-two, and our revenue is at four sixty-two. We, we, it's a billing month, and so we should get more revenue in there. Um, worst case scenario, that fourteen eight is going to come out of the reserves, but I just found like forty thousand dollars in the reserve, so. I just found like forty thousand dollars in the reserve, so. Um, so yeah, everything, everything looked really good, twenty-five looks really good. I think we'll have a better. Grasp on. Quarterlies and all that, so we're, we'll be watching our revenue expense a little more carefully next year.
I appreciate that you're running a smaller checkbook. I think there was. Three quarters of a million dollars in the checkbook when we took over.
Yes, and I will have, um, the first, I'd, I'd. Had no extra room to do anything, but. The next week I'm gonna look at, um. Now that we did have that money pulling to where we're running a tighter, a tighter checkbook and putting that money in the LGIP. Um, because our interest from last year, when. When you were mayor and we put all that money in there, I think it went from like a twelve hundred dollar a month interest payment that we got, and we're at like. Sixty-two hundred dollars a month in interest, just by transferring, I think it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if we can get another hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there, I'm assuming we'd be looking at at least ten grand, just in interest a month, which would be nice.
Thank you for all your work on that. I know that, that the, the pig was. It was definitely painstaking.
Yeah. So again, having that, I think it was fifty-seven thousand in streets. Pop up, it's, I mean, that's one of our lowest funds.
That's really close to the amount that.
We transferred.
We transferred.
Yeah. So it was just, and that's what I told her and they looked at it, but she was like, no, it just, it's. She saw it just worked itself out, and I was like, huh. Interesting. Wish my bank account would do that.
Did we have any other questions? How much for the amendment? Alright, we'll go ahead and call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
The post? Alright, motion carries. So we will go ahead and move on to the iWorks inventory platform. Did you want to speak on this, or did you want Jay to? If I could get a, or entertain a motion for the iWorks inventory.
This is the, are you, are you asking for a motion to accept iWorks?
I am. Or something, now we gotta get something now.
Do, do we want us, are we locked? I don't know how locked in we are. Is that?
There will have to be a motion before discussion. You can motion not to and then amend it later if you want.
I'll make a motion that we accept an inventory platform.
I'll second it as long as it's said general.
Alright, so it's been moved by Eric and seconded by Rebecca. We'll open it for discussion.
Okay, so, um, iWorks, we're doing our, our permits for them. We absolutely love them. The team's amazing. Um, on our exit interview with them, the girl that we had been working with on the code enforcement and the permits. Was just like, oh hey, we do these other things. And so I was like, oh, that's interesting. We're looking for. Uh, the inventory one, so their work management, I think is the name of it, is their, is their inventory, and it's, it's great. It's unlimited users. Um, we can use it for our fleet, which is really nice. Um, when we got a public records on the motorcycle and mileage and maintenance and all that stuff. I had no idea. You have to go back in and you have to find the invoice. Go in, pull the mileage, I mean, it's, it's a mess. So there's an actual, um, a fleet category in there. There's work orders, so anything that they're doing. At the park, on sewer, on water, they can actually put it in there. Um, if there's any parts that they have to use, it's gonna pull from their inventory, and then it will also keep a running. You know, list of actual things that they do. So the work management side of it's great. Through that, we discovered there was the. Other two. Um, platforms that they offered, and I'm gonna let Jay talk on that, just because I don't, I'm not really knowledgeable in the wastewater, but. They were gonna give us a bundle deal. Um, and so Jay, I'll kind of let you speak on, on those, those platforms and why they're gonna be useful.
Really what we came into this looking for. Oh, but if he's there, then I'll see. You want me to put this over there? So really what we came into this looking for was. A program we could put all of our assets into, we can keep track of maintenance. Stuff that hasn't been done for years that needs to start getting done and get. Kept track of and everything like that. The work management part of that. Uh, does very well with that, and, um, they're like a module based thing, so you can have different modules. The reason that we're tagging a couple more modules on there is there are things that we didn't realize would be as helpful as they will be. Moving into this, we kind of discovered them through, uh, working and chatting with iWorks, and. If we bundle them together, we get a much better price than doing it separate or, you know, spread out. So the other two modules are the wastewater treatment facility module and the water distribution system module. And with those, the wastewater. Treatment facility module kind of will allow us to keep track of. All of the stuff we have active at the treatment plant. We got tons of motors and pumps and. All sorts of things that are actively being used, and we got backups for those. And for some reason, they all take a different type of gear oil or, you know, antifreeze or grease, so we gotta keep. Some sort of. You know, record of all that stuff and when things are being done and when things are active and when they have downtime and. Like what the lifespan of these things are. And this kind of gives us a way that we can have all one platform to do so. And it can be a platform that Rachel can have access to if she has any questions, rather than, you know. Having this whole long email thread, she can pop into our side of the iWorks and, you know, see what we got going on for whatever she needs.
Right now they're keeping their handwritten journals.
Yeah, so she kind of touched on the, the work orders thing. Um, traditionally, you know, work orders are used, somebody gives you a work order and you complete it and write whatever in there. Um, it's just me and John down there, we're not giving each other work orders, so. Instead, we could use that as a way to kind of keep record of our large tasks. Um, anything. Then, you know, document that, we can attach photos to it, so we can, you know, click back later on, because everything comes up, you know, two years down the road and you. Trying to scramble to figure out what happened. So we, it, it will give us a means of like documenting the date, who did it? Who, who is the contractor that performed the work? You know, if it was us, what did we do? Put pictures in there.
GIS mapping, correct?
Right, yes. So the, so the water module offers us a GIS map that we can track hydrants and valves. It's not so hard, you know, the hydrants, they're kind of sticking out of the ground, but we got a lot of valves that are buried. We have. Manholes that are, most of our manholes are visible, but then we have light holes that are buried in your asphalt and. You know, we, uh, we've kind of discussed this in the past, we don't have very good maps and, uh.
You should have brought in the map.
Oh, yeah.
The official map.
Yeah, our official map is all shaped and like.
Yeah. It's a colored pencil and it's covered in layers of tape and.
But what we were kind of, John and I were looking into this, um, the map portion of it. It's directed towards water, but we think we can add manholes and whatever, you can kind of do whatever you want. With it, but we can. Um, with that, we can get a GPS receiver, kind of like something similar to what surveyors use and stuff. That connects to our iPad or whatever to get, um, more accurate. GPS data and we can. You know, uh, we're still looking into it, we're not familiar with all the technology and stuff, but, uh. Pretty much so we can get, you know, within a foot of where everything is, and we can have it on this map in this program. And with that, we can. Um, something we haven't done in the past, but we need to get started is, you know, flushing hydrants and exercising our valves. So that way, when there's a water break in the system, we don't go out there and try to turn the valve and it's, doesn't move. Yeah, rusted shell. Um, so getting those, this can help us keep track of it. I mean, we have over eighty manholes, we got, I don't even know how many hydrants and. A million more valves than either of those, so.
And it is gonna, sorry, go ahead.
It's something that we're gonna get done. Throughout this process, you know, we go do a repair and we can like, oh hey, since we're here, we'll tag this. Valve and we'll tag this hydrant since we're on the street. And what? Getting this process started will have us way more organized in the future, just we can. Keep track, and we can get on a system where we're flushing hydrants yearly or exercising valves yearly and we're. Inspecting our manholes for, uh, I and I issues and stuff like that.
I think they'll be able to utilize, um, their summer work help a little better, too. They're gonna, they're gonna be more organized and be able to actually give assignments. And then we had the sewer issue last year during the flood season. Where we needed to see if part of our sewer line had been inspected. Through the AWC, because if not, we had to pay our deductible. We have no way of pulling that stuff up, so it's like, when's the last time? This sewer line's been inspected, we're like, well, we don't know, you know, that was kind of the answer that I got from previous people here. Um, and that's a thousand dollars, so it's gonna.
Take that, so.
Yeah.
And then does it give you reminders to say, you know, like, things need to be done on a, on a basis, it's like, it'll kick your reminder.
And it merges in with our outlook as well, and it'll, yeah, give us email reminders.
And it, it also has some more. Cool stuff, just getting established with iWorks, I think, would be a great thing. Um, they have some, they have a different module which we, which isn't. This, I think just getting established with iWorks will help build that. So that, you know, a couple of years from now, we can have a serious. System going and it's one system, not a dozen different systems. We all got different logins and passwords and different.
And this is unlimited users and you just toggle between, um, whatever platform you're using.
Right.
They're not charging any, I mean, you can literally send them an Excel sheet and say, all of this needs to be uploaded in there. A lot of the other platforms are charging us.
Yeah.
To input stuff.
Charging four thousand dollar one-time keys, so they can, so they can take all your Excel spreadsheets.
And input it.
To their system.
Yeah.
And what we're running into really is a lot of these systems that we looked at are kind of retail-based, you know. Moving in and out stocks, selling t-shirts or whatever. And that's not what we do, we do public work stuff, so finding a platform that fits all of our needs was a little bit tricky, but. We nailed it down to a couple and I think iWorks would be.
They've got QR codes too, that we could put up places that you just kind of scan and you just use your phone to put in maintenance as well.
I have two or three things, so bear with me. Correct me if I'm wrong. Can this be, we have several. Names that need replacing. Would this be something that would help? Contract those out.
I think it would keep it organized for sure, because we can, with that, with that map that I was talking about, we can go all the way down through doing lines too. We can know where our lines sit and we can know, and we can attach, you know, files and when we contract them out. We can give them direct permits, I'm sure we'll be there with them.
Would it, would it manage the, um, the work lists?
What do you mean by that?
Well, when you contract with somebody, you have to give them the specifications that you want and you have to make sure that they are. Doing what you requested. So you have to keep track of that.
Yeah, I think it would definitely help keep track of it and be able to compile what we're looking for. That's what you're asking.
Looking for like reports? In it?
Or just making sure that they're meeting what you're asking them to do?
Yeah, yes.
So have like the plans and stuff in there.
Yes.
Okay, and the other thing is, um. Is there any stopgap on this? Because one of the things I noticed is. Anybody. Can access it. And. If you're doing an inventory. You don't want everybody to be able to get in there and mess with the inventory.
Well, the only people that would access it are gonna be probably John, me and Jay. We're gonna be the only ones with logins. Right, and I would have access to City Hall, um, inventory and.
And would, would it track changes?
Yes, it tracks all of it. Anything that gets changed, there's little notes down below. And it says who changed whatever on.
Yep, uh, whatever date, that's its purpose for existing. I mean.
And it is a very user-friendly.
I think, as far as what you were trying to get with the, with the water main repairs or and such. It gives us a place to put the disposition of all of these specific items, so if, you know, you break it down to this. This chunk of main between first and second on, you know, whatever. Then you now have an entry for that and you can see. What it needs, when it was last touched, what, you know.
Well, I'm not just looking at that, I'm looking at managing the project. And if, if they have to have, um, they have to have streets. If they have to have, uh, bikers in the road, all that kind of stuff.
That's the work order. Well, so, I mean, that would go under work order, I would assume.
I don't think, if what you're asking is that the contractors we're working with are gonna utilize this program to see our.
No, I don't want them to.
They're not.
But I want somebody to have control over the project.
Well, yeah, that's gonna be John, is, you know, or, or Jay, whoever's working on the project. And it's gotta be signed off on. It, I mean, it's, at least now there's documentation of what we're doing with the projects.
And whatever paper documents they need signed off could definitely be added into that for documentation purpose, that way it's all good together and. You know, we need to refer back to it, we can open it up in iWorks and have all the files that. Signed.
Like adding photos, you can scan them up, load documents as well. We get that.
So I saw that it. Works, uh, with anything that has its own browser, so. It doesn't support like taking pictures. I understand you like iWorks, because you're using iWorks with the other thing, but I was looking at it compared to. Management X, and so, you know, what I saw there was a mobile app. With the ability to take pictures before and after, without having this, you're just in a browser, so you're really not. You know, it really doesn't have direct access to your GPS location. Like your phone does and the camera.
Right, that, I think the web browser was a little bit of a downside, because the other one, like you said, had a full on application.
Yeah, you guys are.
But, um. As far as I know, and we haven't had an opportunity to test out the system, but I believe you can add photos, whether you be uploading them as a file. So if we just take them on the fly and, you know, then we get back.
Yeah, you can upload, I mean, just.
I think with the GPS coordinates thing, it's just as, um. It's just whatever hardware you're working with. GPS capabilities, so.
So, you, are you leaning, you were talking towards the three packages? That's. Five grand a year. That's a lot of software. I just want to make sure it's gonna get used, you know, at a certain point, you're, the, the work to get your work done is so, becomes so big that you don't have time to get your work done.
Right.
So I don't know, that's on, we've got to figure out. Right, how much? You know, how, because I know, uh, no, no, no lack of understanding on my part, it's not much work. Very many, it's gonna be, I think it's fantastic that it's gonna track other things for you and water and sewer. The question is, do you have time to have all this software? That makes sense.
It's gonna take years to get everything fully inputted, but we gotta start somewhere. It's kind of what Jay and I were, we're looking at.
Think the primary reason of doing it this way is just because of what the bundling it together offers us as far as savings.
The hundred dollars over the seventeen times three, so it's not really much of a savings.
Yeah, and we can shorten the contract. You already told them you guys aren't gonna go for a three-year contract.
Yeah, I think, yeah, because you have it, it's a big decision you're making here, right? You're, it's almost like you're choosing a wife. You're, you're gonna live with this, really, seriously. So.
First one's just trial and error anyways, Jay, it's fine.
So does it look like future inventory management software?
Yes. And, and I do feel like it, it is beneficial to some degree to have all of your stuff in, you know, and like they've said. If you've got six different programs that you're remembering, six, six different logins, and then it's. Six different times that we've got to go over contracts and renewals and.
But that's nothing compared to the time they're gonna spend it every single day, all day. So like, do you like visions more than you like iWorks right now?
I know them both, so it's.
But which one sucks more? See, so that's what I mean, that's right, because you're living with it, and if it turns out that, oh my God, I have, I have another thing and.
But we did, we did kind of.
Longer, but I've got a million of those to do, that's a million minutes.
We did kind of discuss this too, and it's one of those things, it's the same thing, it's like one bite at a time, it's what we're doing with our records and it's. You know, Jay's like, if I spend fifteen to twenty minutes a day. Working on this, or they spend their Fridays working on it, it's gonna get done, and if they don't start now, it's just gonna take. That much longer to complete it.
I do, I do understand where you're coming from. But yeah, the public works guys, they used to, you know, take the last fifteen minutes of their day to write down in a. Composition notebook.
That was awesome.
And it, it is really helpful, but if we did that in a manner, I mean, just electronically, I think.
We're moving.
And every, you know, we.
The future, yeah.
It's all stuff we need to do anyway physically in the field, so we just. Take our iPad out there too and, you know.
Well, I think one of the benefits there is that. As opposed to writing it down in your journal, now you're inputting it into the software. That now takes. That now takes over the management and control and reminding you and. All the history that you're going to need instead of having to go back to a journal book and go, when did we do that? And not being able to find it.
Right.
Oh, I'm sold on the, I'm sold on the solution. It's the right solution. The question is, is it the right one? And is, is all, is all three of them what you wanna bite off right off the bat? I could argue both sides of that. It's probably worth the money, even if you don't get full use out of it right off the bat, just to have it there and start to pick it up. It's gonna take you like. One of you said, it's gonna take years anyway.
Well, let me, let me give you a good example. The medical field, how expensive medical care is now. That's because the hospital has one set of software, the doctor has another set of software. The uh, X-rays have another set of software. Nobody has the same set of software. They don't talk to each other. And it's manual input. Why don't I know that?
I-Works really is great too. It's a young team, they're techie, you know, they're, they're, everything can be um. Modified to what we want. So if there's information in those reports that we, we don't need, they get rid of it. If there's fields in there that we do need. They get rid of it. I mean, there's, there's things that auto fill and it's.
I think that implementation thing's gonna be helpful too, cause if, like you said, we get, you know, two months into it and then we realize it's a pain. But to input all these things in the field, if we send them, you know, fifteen uh, GPS coordinates and whatever. While they can dance down to, and we say, these are all hydrants, can you implement them into our map? You know, they'll, we just shoot that one email and then it's there the next day.
Yeah, and if you guys already have it, you just enter it all in an Excel sheet, put the, the, you know, the, the header on there and they, they throw it all in there for you.
Um, so if you decide you want to go to a different system in the future, does I-Works allow for export?
They do. Yep, I've already asked that question with the permits.
As long as we're up to date.
Have you, uh, have you gone at it again to bring the price down more?
Um, I could probably get it down a little more. And I did tell him I wasn't signing a three-year contract, that that would have to come down to two. They said, that's fine. They put it through it.
And so year two can only go up five percent.
On year two? I can throw it out there. I can say, you know, how much they're willing to come down and try to get it lower. But they did get rid of all the sign-on fees like they did for us last time. I think there was like forty-five hundred dollars in. Sign-on fees and I, they knew that you guys weren't gonna go for that. I worked with the same. The same guy.
Okay, so can I get an amendment on the motion for a, a name?
I'm in my motion to uh, actually uh, the uh, I-Works. Three. Package, the three module pack.
For two years.
So it has been moved by Eric and seconded by Rebecca. Go ahead and call for a vote on it. All those in favor? Opposed? Alright, so we'll move over to unfinished business. Thank you, Jay. Um, so we've got. Ordinance number eight-one-three, an ordinance of the city of Toledo, Washington, adopting the twenty-twenty-five budget as required by law. This is. Been moved by Rebecca and seconded to. Gone through it once.
I still think it looks great.
Alright, I will go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Alright, I can carry. We'll move on to the ILA for Winlock PD Services. They would entertain a motion on that one as well.
Make motion, we accept the modified, the tied, Winlock PD Services I like.
Moved by Eric and seconded by Rebecca. We'll go ahead and open it up for any discussion.
I see, so they changed the. The two items that were. Oh yeah, the termination. And the situation is going till.
The end of twenty-twenty-five.
Tracks on the same, our planning, our court.
I believe that it'll go to a three-year after that, cause that's, that falls in line with their union contract negotiation, so.
So, when I was signing checks the other day, you had purchased equipment for. One of the vehicles. And in looking through here. Here, we were required to update and equip the vehicles.
Was that the radar that was required by SEPA?
Yeah, it was radar required by SEPA. And then before we even sat down with this contract, um. Sherry, me and Valentine had all sat down and they said before they wanted the vehicles, they wanted them in working order. And Dwayne's car was not in working. The printer, no, the printer was fine. Yeah, the computer was fine, the printer was fine, but it was his radio, Terran's print, Terran's radio. Worked, it was a new radio. I'm not sure why he drove the unmarked car, but the. Radio in his car didn't.
That's when it got broken into.
No, that was, that was Terran's old one. That's. The radar, um, the mounted Python radar, the radio and everything worked in Terran's car. He drove that one where there was no radar, there was no radio. So yeah, we had to get a working radio and then the radar, um, was paid for by K.R. Holmes.
Yeah, that was required through SEPA.
So, if we had not updated them, they could have chosen to not take them, correct?
But we wanna work with them. We wanna show them, you know, we appreciate what, what they're doing, you know, they appreciate what we're doing. We're gonna give them two extra vehicles to use. Um, which I'm sure helps when they have one vehicle in with maintenance. They can use the other one. And we would have had to do it anyways, even if we were gonna try to hire another police department here, we couldn't have given them a, a vehicle that.
The radio didn't work.
Didn't work, yeah.
Get some keeping with the, the price for what they're giving us.
Yeah, and I was literally able to update those vehicles off of money left over from twenty-four, so it's not even gonna. Affect our twenty-five budget. We just have to get the, the car, um, the decal, the car marked. Cause it needs to be marked. And that's, I'm working on, that's the last thing I have to do. So, but that should all still go in the twenty-four budget.
We have any further discussion on the ILA?
Thank you for your work on this.
Alright, we will go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to other business, um. So, we've got quite a few on there, um. I guess we can start with the Grove short flat though. Um, but I would entertain a motion for approval of the Grove short flat alteration. And then Todd can get this report too.
How do you say that? I'll make a motion that we accept the Grove flat alteration.
Can you get a second? Alright, it's been moved by Rebecca and seconded by Kathy. Do we have any discussion on it? Todd, did you wanna speak on that one?
Unless you need any more information, information for me, I don't have anything I can say.
It's conforming. The only thing that wasn't conformant is that they did a short flat within the previous five years.
I guess I.
And, and so why do we have a regulation that? You can't do it within five years.
So, yeah. The reason that most jurisdictions adopt that. Again, we used to say, the reason that most jurisdictions adopt that rule is so that people can't take a large chunk of land. And through a series of short plats, which receive only a little bit of public notice. They could, you know, if you have five acres. You could short plod that into nine lots, then you could come back and short plod those nine lots into another nine lots. And, and, and so on and so forth. So to avoid that from happening, which doesn't have a lot of public notice and doesn't have the same requirements that a subdivision has. Which is anything more than nine lots, um, most jurisdictions say, well, you can't do it again for five years. Um, there's a, there's an option that if you haven't achieved the full amount of lots, that you can go back and do a replat, which is what was done here. They only, they only had two lots to begin with and they're, um, they're adding another lot in, so. They're, they're still below what's allowed from a short flat. They weren't obviously trying to circumvent the plating rules. So that's why we made the recommendation for approval.
Okay, I, I looked at it and I couldn't figure out what the heck was going on.
Rules prohibit them from doing a short flat again, so they're, um. Which is a lot of public process and notice and hearings in front of planning commission, then hearings in front of council. Going through SEPA, um, all that. And for the one additional lot, that amount of process just didn't make any sense to anybody. It didn't have any public benefit. And it didn't benefit the applicant or the environment at all, so. Um, but was, when that came in, we looked at that and said, well, we could do a replat. And that just goes to council, it's one hearing. There's no secret requirements. They're just creating one additional lot, so it's not. A huge amount of impact to the city, so there's, there's really nothing, there's no. Barely any additional traffic and barely any additional impact to utilities or other services. The only thing I would ask is that you, I'm in the motion to approve it subject to the conditions that are recommended in the staff report, if you agree with all those. Um, there are just a couple of things in there. They are in a flood plain, they're gonna need to comply with flood plain regulations. Having it at a flat decision just makes it clear, they have to comply with them anyway, but, um, the, the other, um. We've, we've been asking, uh, Gray and Osborne to review surveys for survey standards. Um, they did have a few comments on the draft that was submitted. Um, the applicant did just last week submit another draft. And we forwarded that onto the surveyor, so just having it approved subject to the surveyor's comments being resolved.
I think they were all resolved.
Well, I, I, I don't know, I mean. I, sometimes we send it back to Mike and his team says, well, now that you changed that, this doesn't make sense. And there, there might be another one, but. Usually not, I mean, they're pretty thorough in their reviews, so. So I would just ask that you, um, when you approve this, that you approve it subject to the conditions as in the staff report.
And that they recorded with Lewis County.
Oh, yeah, that's right, and I, 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 I do work in a couple of different counties and a couple of different jurisdictions. And as I was typing out the conditions of approval, I said, the Calhoun County Auditor, this will actually be recorded with the Lewis County Auditor. Which is the appropriate authority for the city of Toledo. So my apologies to all of you. For mistyping that as I was writing this, but, um, it, it, that should be changed to the Lewis County Auditor, not Calhoun County.
Well, you know that we're reading your reports.
I appreciate that too. So if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them otherwise.
But does the motion need to be amended?
Amended to, um, follow the staff report.
Um, I have moved that we, uh, accept the, um, Grove Platte.
Alteration.
Alteration on, uh, the, uh, condition, uh, uh, in the staff report. Conditions listed in the staff report. Modifying Alex County I during to Lewis County.
Can I get a second on that? Alright, amended motion was made by Rebecca and seconded by Jamie. We'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Alright, perfect. Motion carried.
I, I noticed.
We'll move on to the next thing. So we've got the discussion on, um, comp plan budget review.
That's Todd, I think. We need, we need more money for the comp plan.
So, uh. We've been working very diligently at trying to get through all the required elements. Uh, we're really not taking on a lot more than what's the minimum not required by the state. Um, last year, when we were talking through the grant, we put together the grant application and we, we filed all that. I, I raised the caution that. Even though it seems like a lot, getting through two years worth of process and the work required to do that, the grant. Doesn't ever cover that. I've never worked in a jurisdiction where the grant is enough. Um, and, and although in this case, the state has a fairly, like, fairly generous grant, it's still, still shy of what it costs to get through that process. Um, we are also kind of working with some outdated, um. I was taking a, a bit more time than it would have in a jurisdiction that had a, a fully developed zoning code with a number of different zones that were applicable. Um, all that work would come before you, um. So, sometime in, in the second half of next year, so we will get to reviewing it through it. But then also the required elements to update the, um. The critical areas components, um, those were included as a concept before, but I, I didn't get estimates. Because I, until we set the urban growth area, tried to figure out where that was, I didn't know how much study area there was going to be. So I, I couldn't, um, I couldn't get meaningful estimates from either Gray and Osborne. The engineers who will do the capital facilities, planning to look at what water and sewer utilities and, and road transportation improvements are needed to serve the area. And then I also couldn't get, um, a meaningful, um. Scope and budget from the, the weapons biologist who will do the critical areas components. When I reached out to them, their numbers came in even higher than what I had thought. Um, I think, I think according to before, I kind of thought that it was probably gonna be about a thirty thousand dollar ad. Um, but their numbers came back much higher and then, so when we were. Shrinking down to not expanding the urban growth area at all, I, I should, I sent that off to them. But, uh, for them too, a lot of the required elements in there don't shrink beyond a certain level. You know, there's an expansion to, to do that added work. But then, you know, they get down to a certain point and it, it just needs to be done. We need to check all the boxes, we need to do all the work, so. Unfortunately, it came back in to a point, um, you know, the consultants were, were estimating. More in the neighborhood of about fifty thousand dollars extra work. So in, in this budget, I proposed a couple of things. Uh, since you already have a contract with Gray and Osborne, when I run things through PRJ planning, um, then I've got to, I've got to ensure those. I have to pay taxes on, there's overhead for me, so there's a fee that I tack on to cover that. And since the Gray and Osborne, um, proposal was, uh, about a thirty-six thousand dollar item, I thought, well, there's a way. You can save ten percent if you'll contract directly with them. And you usually work with them in the course of business and. Um, and they already carry the insurance they need, so if you take me out of the loop on the billing, I'll, I can still manage the project and work with them as, as I have. Um, but that would save, save you a chunk of money, right, off the top of that. Um, and then the other thing. Since it's part of my on-call contract to work with your planning commission, there's a certain amount that you're paying each month for that. So. And, and right now, the majority of the work that I'm doing is focused on working with planning commission and trying to get these required elements through. So there's a little bit of double up there, so I, I thought I could take that money and put it towards, um. The grant, instead of putting, putting it toward the required elements for the comp plan. Rather than, than continuing to bill as we've agreed to pay for those on-call services, I'll just use that time. And instead support planning commission and, and apply it that way. And if I do that, it should take about another twelve thousand dollars off of, of the bill. If I do that for six months, which is like, what I think it's gonna take to get through this. So that kind of brings the total back down to about a thirty-six thousand dollar increase. Um, which is kind of what you all said, yeah, but that's thirty-six thousand dollars, that's a lot, but. I don't think it's gonna, it's not gonna get any lower than that. And we're required to complete all these elements. We're not really going above and beyond and doing a lot of things that are extra. There's not a lot we can cut out of the budget. So with that, that's kind of how we got here and what we're asking for. I could answer any questions. I've also included both scopes in there, Gray and Osborne scope, as well as the scope from. Ethel, the land services, who's the weapons and habitat biologists. Um, we are also economizing by. Kind of taking what the county just got approved as their critical areas ordinance. We're gonna change the names and kind of rework a couple of the codes in there and then, um, ELS will go through and, and audit that to make sure it still complies with all the state. Requirements and then we'll take that as Toledo's code and adopt it as our own. But we've also gotta run that through the state and through the SEPA process and other things, uh, for that, so. So it, there's still a little bit of work to do, but we've cut, we're not drafting new code. And we're not charting uncharted waters by coming up with new concepts, we're just stealing the county's code. Adopting it as our own, that saves us money and, um, I think the county was probably took a minimalist approach to their critical areas too. They're not over-regulating or, or under-regulating, they're just right in that spot where it needed to be, so.
And no need to reinvent the wheel.
Right.
Anybody have any questions?
No, thank you, Todd. I, I'd rather have bronze than gold, um.
Right, and that did not quite.
Well, we need, we need.
Thank you for sharpening.
It'd be, it'd be nice to get it approved, cause then I can put it in my budget. It's not in the twenty-twenty-five budget right now and Todd needs to be able to give the go-ahead to his guys.
I would entertain a motion, um, for people.
I'll make the motion, that'd be approved, and others, is it thirty-six or thirty-seven?
Thirty-six, three oh two.
Thirty-six, three oh two, through the budget for the comp plan.
Hi, Eric, and seconded by Rebecca.
I'll figure it out.
That was very professional.
Um, all right, any discussion at all? All right, I will go ahead and call for a vote, all those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you for what you do for us, Todd.
We wouldn't be successful.
Very appreciated.
I, I love working for this town.
Can we pay you an eggs?
But I do appreciate those. Side of me, eggs, I don't know.
All right, so we'll move on to the next order, uh, or next item on other business, which is two oh one Oak Street Water Sewer Hookup. Did you have anything or just open it up to them?
Yeah, you can go ahead and open it up, just don't state your name. Yeah.
Sorry.
He's like, no, no. She's like, get up here.
Okay, we are live home, and to be honest, I didn't understand half of what you said, so this, this is gonna be very simple. Um, so I'm Kylie Durham.
And I'm Jester.
Yes, and we recently purchased two zero one Oak Street. Um, is everyone, are you familiar with, are all of you acquainted with kind of the situation going on there? Do I need to go into that or should we?
There was a report, did every, is everyone caught up to date? There was a, a staff report in there on it.
Synopsis.
Okay, synopsis, so, um, we are being charged. Twelve thousand four hundred dollars to re-hook up water sewer to two zero one Oak Street. Um, which, we're not coming in guns blazing, we're not angry about it. In fact, Rachel's been great, you've been great too. Um, and we've been having conversations off the non since March, we've made that purchase. Um, it's a seller-owner agreement, um, and so we have, we have to get it livable. And my husband and I have a certain amount of money to get it livable. Um, and so, um, and twelve thousand four hundred dollars is about half of that. Um, and, um, so we wanna make a couple, a couple requests. Don't necessarily know the proper way of doing that, but, um. And we also kind of wanna explain our situation a little bit to you guys. Um, so our, our first request is, um, when we asked for, and itemized since the one that twelve thousand four hundred. Is four, um, there just isn't one.
Well, I did send you over the email with everything that the money went to in that public request.
Oh.
It wasn't like a, a, a dollar finger, uh, thing, figure, but it was.
Oh, shoot, so you already did do, you did come up with one?
Yeah, I sent it, it was like the next day after we started chatting through email.
Okay, so you actually did figure out how much everything would cost?
It's not itemized per dollar, but it's everything that that amount covers.
Okay, okay, um, so then you can scratch that one off the list. Although for future, I think one of our requests is, if anybody ends up in the same situation, it'd probably be nice to have something written up.
Yeah, we do know, it was, I said all that in the email that.
Every year, no, um, so that's everyone, thank you. Um, so then number two is, and we don't even know if you guys can even do this, or if, we understand that this is kind of. It's what is fair and what is owed, um. Um, and I haven't looked at that yet, but that'll help a lot, but we are in, um. Basically in a, a situation where anything is gonna help. So if there's any, any way, like best case scenario or second request is, can that be lowered at all? Um, and I don't know if also you addressed the, the, the fact that it has been hooked up before. I know we kind of talked about that, you and I kind of talked about that, um, if you would address that in the email, if that matters at all. Um, so, can it be lowered at all would be like best case scenario. Mainly because we are already, um, having deep talks with, or like, we're already signed up with a, um. Like a mortgage company, um, and we are refinancing in March. And we are, we're doing a cash out, so we are gonna get enough money to be able to finish whatever projects we don't get done right away. Um, and so we're kind of living on the pennies that we have right now in order to get it to that point in water sewer for that. Um, we, we, I don't know if I'm missing anything, I feel like.
I think part of the issue for us is we can't take out a loan before we take out the loan. And we only have a certain amount of money to get the house livable, and if we had given out that money. There is a very good chance that we cannot get the house livable and we can't get an actual loan for it, if that makes sense. So, um, I guess with the second request, the request would be that. If we were able to pay that amount after we could finance, but the water was already hooked up, because it's a requirement for us to have running water in the house. Um, at that point, we could just put that on the top of what our loan already is, um, what that, whatever that amount is. Um, and kind of lump it in, whereas before, we're just paying money out of our pocket and it's, um, it's gonna eat into the money that we're trying to put into the house.
Yeah, and we're, yes, and we're also, uh, it's just really, it's like a kind of a tight scenario, because we're paying where, where we're at. And we're paying, um, you know, we're paying on this mortgage, we're paying the previous seller. And now we're gonna be paying the water sewer, and so we're, we are trying to get it not just livable, but like, we have a three-year-old. And we're trying to get it to where we can like move in and get by until we get it financed. Something I also forgot to mention is, um, in June, uh, uh, a law was passed that we have to own the home for a year. That's why we have to finance in March now, we can't finance it earlier, I forgot to mention that. Um, and so we're trying to still get moved in before that, so that we don't have to pay all of these extra things that. We're not trying to flip this home, we're just trying to like get a regular monthly payment, like, you know, anyway. Um, so, it's my bedtime, so I'm tired. It's my kid's bedtime, but that's my birthday, anyway, so, so best case scenario. And I don't know if it's even like possible or feasible, and we understand if it can be lowered. So, if not, can it be pushed out to March? Um, oh, and there's a, a payment plan also that Rachel mentioned that, I'm sorry, that. Um, Ra- Rachel mentioned that, um, would go toward the, the, the sewer. Um, but it puts a lien on our home, so we can't do that. Um, because then we can't get financed, we also can't get out a loan, because, um, our financing guy said. You can't, yeah, you can't take out a loan then, so.
Yeah, it's not gonna fail.
Yeah, and we didn't know that it was gonna be twelve thousand six hundred, I know that you and I talked, we talked, this is, call it. Not fortuitous, I don't know what the opposite of it is, bad luck, but, um, we've been trying to reach the city, leading up to closing. Um, and it, it ended up being thirty minutes after we closed, that I got a call from Rachel saying it was twelve thousand six hundred dollars, so.
And I did speak to your title company too.
Yeah. So. There.
How long has this been disconnected?
Um, two thousand and seven.
Yeah, ten years.
So it's, it's more, the only thing I can think of is, I mean, I would have to have council approval, but if there's some way to do, I don't know, like a contract where we do it, they get the loan out. But it gets pulled, I mean, are you guys gonna be able to get approved for the loan?
Yes, yeah.
So I mean.
We do something, apply the contingent.
Contingent, yeah, and it, we could try to, you know, say this loan, you know. It needs to be done by, you know, whatever date that they're gonna give us, they need to be able to provide. Cause there will have to be a lien on the property, and I was explaining to her why, you know, it's people that are, you know, they could turn around and sell the house. And if there's no lien on the house, we don't get our money for the hookups, if you guys are okay with that, I mean, that's. But there's all the money that goes into, I mean, it's completely up to you guys, like, we can try to brainstorm some stuff, I don't, you know, but. I don't know if you guys have had this situation before or what, really? Yeah.
So the, you know, payment side of things.
Yeah.
Um, that's a years by yearly, like a thousand dollars a year until it's.
Yeah, it's really low.
It's ten years, it's like.
Yeah, it's ten years.
You're saying, you actually sign, sign a term sheet with the city, you won't qualify for your loan?
No, the problem is that there's a, we have to take a loan, we have to take, pull a, pull a deed out on it. So again, if we're able to do something to where we can do that later down the road, but I don't know legally how that all.
A good day to put some earnest money down along the way.
I don't think it's that, that's, I don't think that's the.
I see what you.
I don't think that's the rub, but I think, yeah.
What you're saying is, it's contingent.
We can get like a contingent, like an LOI on, or the intent to pay it.
I can tell you our financial situation too.
No, and I, I know, we've spoken, yeah.
It's more like, it's more like that we, we are freaking municipality and.
Yeah, and that's what I mean, but you're.
Your rules that are getting in the way a lot.
Right, and my hands are tied, and that's what I've been telling you, but you're in the right spot, like, I can't do anything more than what I told you I can do, but. There's people at these, at the table can, so I think. Eric, go, I mean, what are you?
Why is there a twelve thousand dollar bill?
Yeah.
And the previous owner, it's, it was cut off because you quit making payments, so.
Yeah, so this is like a new.
Yes.
Yeah.
To an old pedal.
Still done either, so, yeah, I'm really glad that, yeah, like.
Are the lines in place?
Um, I don't.
Probably were.
Yeah, they were. They'd have to go re-through and redo everything on the.
Saddles on the main.
And it's not even hooked up to our connections anymore or.
Yeah.
But it's gonna be, I mean, it's not like we're gonna not recoup that, and it's mostly sunk cost of parks that we have, if we park single-drug. And that's not gonna hurt us.
So what are you suggesting? What can I do?
Figure out something so that we can get them water turned down pending their ability to get along.
You want me to just come up with something and bring it back?
Yeah, or, or we just approve, come up with something.
And theoretically, you're going to have a water sewer hooked up to that house eventually.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying is, you know.
And so you're never not going to get paid for your hook up.
Yeah.
So you're saying, saying, you know, once they find us.
That's why we have extraordinary circumstances for our people.
So I can just do a contract where once they get their water sewer hooked up, they'll pay an additional amount of money every month. And if they don't pay, then service get disconnected like it would for. Payment of non, of non-payment until that portion gets paid with their water sewer bill.
That a payoff date.
Correct.
So what, what day are you asking for to hold off on, so you said March, but?
March, yeah, March third is our, the, but it's.
Also, um, at the end of the year, the price changes also.
Oh, yeah.
That's fine.
The question.
Okay, yeah. We'll again, yes, we will.
Thank you so much.
So I'll make a motion that be.
I'd like to do a, a side contract for their water and sewer, um, I'll come up with. An amount that would be equivalent to what they would pay on the water sewer loan. Um, and what we'll do is if they miss a payment, it'll work just as it would with a, um. A water payment not getting received, where they'll get their delinquency notice. After fifteen days, they'll get their water shut off, and then in order to get their water turned back on. Then they have to pay their water bill plus their monthly payment and then going into, hmm, March or whatever, we'll try to get their, their deed done.
And why don't we request for payment stay off in, like, May thirty-first, give them.
Yeah, cause they, maybe the New Year's or Tuesday's weekend or something.
For what? The whole payoff?
Yeah.
Yeah, or, or the, the, either payoff or to. Pretend you're playing one together.
Okay.
So as they're financing, yeah.
Is that ten-year plan, does that, is that water and sewer, or is it just sewer?
It's just sewer, the way the ordinance is written, but I think we can have that amended and, cause I already wanted to have that done anyways, it should be water and sewer, I don't know why. Yeah, we'll take her.
They did, it's just a great water and sewer.
Okay, well.
Can I get a second?
I, I've, and, uh, are we putting some kind of lien for guarantee to the city, that, no offense.
We can't lean while.
Can't lean either.
But we can put it on our contract.
Need some wording in there that, that if.
I'll bring a contract on the next, the first meeting in January, when do you guys need water turned on by? Like last week?
Yeah.
Well, do you know what's gonna happen when you hear an water?
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, that, that's.
That's a good point.
Yeah, that's, um.
We, we are not exactly sure where it is out in the yard, because it's covered in grass, so. We would also wanna find that before it's turned on, just in case something like that happens, so we can shut it off.
Yeah, I'm guessing the meter hat wasn't changed out when the meters were swapped.
Meter was pulled.
So they'll have to find their box for you anyway.
But, oh, okay.
Well, the P W, you have a locator?
Uh, well, we have a locator, but not a.
Jamie, if you wanna come up, we'll, we'll figure it out tomorrow, and then I'll come up with the contract and all.
John remembers it, you know, so.
Yeah, I'm sure it's in his journal.
Yeah, he's like, oh.
That's why the software.
Uh, can I get a second?
I'll say.
Okay.
I, yeah, the motion for.
Yes, what I said.
So made by Eric, seconded by Rebecca. I'll go ahead and just call for the vote, all those in favor?
I hope you guys.
Perfect. And then. Business presentability.
Okay, so I was at the, I was at the, uh, planning commission and like, a meeting and I got to see Todd talk about what. We're gonna have for building standards, and I really liked that it was not annoying. You know, it wasn't thou shall have gingerbread and, you know, and get it, your color approved from the five colors. Anyway, I really liked that a lot, I'd like to see something similar to that for businesses.
That are existing.
Businesses shouldn't look like the world. And I was hoping we could direct planning commission to please. Do that as well.
I agree, and I, again, I don't think it needs to be HOA style, where everybody's.
It just needs to be something so that you just can't have it be.
They need to look somewhat uniform and, and up to.
Or it can't just be a complete mess, I mean. And I don't know what that is, you know, if you're gonna have a business, if you're gonna have a run a business, then you should have a sign, and if it could actually be a sign, then you should. You should keep the premises and, I don't know, you know what I mean, it should look like a business.
It's, is that something the planning commission can go ahead and take on? It'd be greatly appreciated, I would offer you baked goods, but she's gonna be beat hands down.
Thank you.
I, I do like that, I, I know, having been like over in Ellensburg and it's funny to be in the way. There's no all, they're not cookie cutter, they don't all match, but they all have like the same feel. Like, and it just looks so much nicer to not have that dilapidated building in the middle.
Hundred percent.
Or a sandwich.
Or a sandwich. Right next to your unmoled lawn.
All right, so.
Something else you mentioned.
That cover, nope, uh, we already did the short flat. We've covered all those.
Those property, we did that already.
So it looks like we have all of those handled, so any public input tonight? Yes, ma'am. You don't get to be exempt, I'm sorry.
So, um, Carol Birch, manager at, you know, Thursday Market, had our last market last Thursday, so we are shutting down now until. Uh, first day of spring, third week of March will start up, I'd like to thank you guys for your support. Um, we're looking forward to a new year. Planning already, we will definitely be having the pumpkin grime contest, everybody thought that was great. We're probably gonna have a free-for-all sunflower growing contest, and I don't know what's, we've already got a list going of things that we wanna do that will involve kids more. Um, I'm chasing a grant that will allow us to supplement the market match that's already on the federal grant. No guarantees on that, but I'm kinda looking into it and we'll see what happens. Um, so we're just getting ready for the year, we're all very happy we have three months off now. Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, and the cookies are.
Yeah, where's my peanut butter cookies?
Alright, it's a lot of friendly stuff, yeah, so no executive session, so I would.
I'll make a motion that we return, I'm returning.
No, we've already closed.
We didn't close it, guys.
I know that you saw settled this, as gee whiz, you know, we live here in twenty-two and twenty-three, things started looking better and. Twenty-four looks like it'll be a piece of cake, and if it wasn't for the thousands of hours of both you and Eric put in for this. We'd be in the same position we were in two thousand twenty-one, my heartfelt thanks to both of you.
Yeah, yeah, it was good to hear that twenty-three things just fell into place.
Yeah, they just worked themselves out.
I was like.
That's a good thing.
That's not exactly how that happened.